All right, good morning, everybody. The time is nine oh three a.m. I'm going to call this regular term meeting, the B County Commissioners Court to Order. Today is Monday, February ten, twenty twenty five. We're at the B County Courthouse, Commissioners Court Room Number One Ten, one oh five West Corpus Christi Street, Beville, Texas, seventy eight one oh two. That was the call to order. Would everybody please stand and join Commissioner Farias for his prayer?
Dear Holy Father, we thank you so much for all your blessings. We thank you for allowing us to be here today. We ask you to watch over all the decisions that this court makes to be the best judgment that we can for all the people here that we represent. We ask you for some rain for the area, and we thank you so much for all that you do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas pledge. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. You guys quiet on indivis- you're trying to-
I have a mental block on the pledge of allegiance, and usually the commissioners kind of help me out by increasing their voice on the spot where I stumble, but today I clearly noticed Commissioner Farias dropped to a mere whisper on the word that usually catches me up.
You did good.
Thank you.
He's been doing well.
Yeah, so far I'm a hundred percent.
We're already into the second one.
Okay, we're on agenda item number four, which is recognition of visitors. There's no requirement that anybody identify themselves. If you do want to identify yourselves for our record, you may. This isn't public comment. That'll come up in a few minutes, so all you can do is stand up and say your name, and if you're with an entity, you can say that you're with an entity, and it'll be in our meeting minutes. Otherwise, if you would like to address Commissioner, take away a couple of agenda items, and we'll get to that shortly. Is there anybody who'd like to identify themselves for the record?
Hi, I'm Maddix from here from Frontier Waste. There's somebody's go.
Thank you. Glad you're here. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Maddie Vera. I'm a Texas A&amp;M college student, medical student, rotating to Beville this past two weeks.
We're so glad you're here. We can't wait to hear a little bit more in a few minutes. Anybody else? Thank you all for being here. Please come back anytime. We'll move on to agenda item number five, Commissioners Court, opening remarks. Commissioner Lenny, I believe you're up this time.
No, you're good. You're still a hundred percent so far. Okay. I thought I would pull a little Commissioner Dewitt this morning, a little funny. Sitting on his way, it was like, wow.
And you've learned how to do this, you're gonna teach the court, right?
I'm gonna try to give it a shot. It was amazing, though. It was just like everyone was just standing there like. Anyway.
Very cool.
Yeah. Okay, back to this one. Got with Tex dot on a warning sign, that a stop sign was coming ahead, a flashing light out on seven ninety-nine coming up to six seventy-three without, so they went and took a look at that, get that fixed. Also, Roden Bridge, thank you, guys. I got with Jonathan about kind of three thirty-one, three thirty-four, and within a couple of days, that was all taken care of. That lady called and said, thank you so much, because that was a bad area right there, so thank you all. I got with Skidmore Tyne ISD about February twenty-sixth, the B County Day at the Capitol, and they're looking at taking some of their high school and junior high student council, so that'd be good. And if you, if you're interested in going, you can click, go to my Facebook page, Commissioner Christopher Lenny, and click on the QR code, or you can also call the Chamber of Commerce at three six one, three five eight, three two six seven, and speak to Letitia Manillos, if you're wanting to go to B County Day at the Capitol on February the twenty-sixth. And I believe that we're supposed to be there around nine o'clock at J M Lozano's office to start. Also, I spoke with Senator Adam Hinojosa and State Representative Jane Lozano about an issue here in B County I needed their help on. I met with Mr. Robert Beck on an issue with the expo, we're gonna touch later on the agenda. And then also, I was honored to be invited to attend the twenty twenty-five State of the State address in Austin by Governor Abbott, where he laid out his plans for the year. And then afterwards, he had the Democrat side came and give their response to that. That was, it was pretty cool. That was an energetic experience, to say the least. With that, I'll pass it on to my left.
Thank you, sir. Don't have a whole lot, Judge, but all of it's important.
Excellent.
I had the pleasure of being at the reception for our promising medical student here the other night. One thing that came up is inside, there were a number of physicians there, and they were talking about every bed in the Beville Hospital is full of folks with the flu. Every bed in Corpus is full of folks with the flu. So those of you that haven't had it, you're very, very fortunate. Those of you that have, hopefully you get over it and be in good shape, but it's going around, you know, cover your sneezes, that sort of thing. It's here. And they also said that the flu shot that everybody took, let me back up. They always try to anticipate which strain of flu is gonna come, and they designed the flu shot for that strain. They missed it this time. It's a different flu strain. But it's out there. Several of our people have been out in the county, and we wish them all the best to get back to good health. One thing that we talked about several months ago was doing a commemorative sign for Mr. Jerry Arredondo the Third at the mineral waste area. That sign has been produced, it has come in. We'll be getting with the family and making arrangements to have a little dedication out there. One thing I'd like to say, and correct if I'm wrong, gentlemen, the gentleman that makes our signs for us donated the signs because he thought so much of Jesse and worked so closely with him, he said, I'm not gonna charge you for the signs off. So we really appreciate that. Jesse was a great guy, and I think Commissioner Oliver said he was working the day before he passed away. He was out running the roads. So that's dedication. He had several medical issues, but it never slowed him down, he's kept on going like an energizer running. You know what, Judge, I believe I'm gonna stop there this time and break one.
I don't really know what to do, and I think the rest of this, sorry, too. This is way too short. Commissioner, anything else?
Well, I'm thinking something in the middle.
Okay. We'll come back to you, Commissioner Farias.
All right, I follow that. Yeah. Had a real busy two weeks. Johnny Zagary and I met with Quantum Boiler Services here, so they could give a bid on the second boiler, so we have two different companies buying and giving us their projections of what we need here. The judges in the second floor were complaining a little bit about the lights there, so I got the, the lights were turning off because of the motion during court, so I'm gonna have to step out. I changed the, got it to a regular light switch, and the judges should be okay with that. All right, got that done. I met with our DA, Ms. MacWilliams. Now that the, the EOC is moving out to the Coliseum, she wants petitions and some doors changed around in that office, so we're looking at that now. We're trying to get a couple of bids in so we can accommodate her there in those offices. I also went over to the Agri Life Building, and now that the, the community affairs is moving out there, they're also wanting to make some changes, so we're moving out there. I'm gonna go out there with them this week and meet with Randy and with, and try to get that situated there. Since we're talking about the community affairs building, there's an item on the agenda you're gonna see in a little bit. The electrical has gone out on that, so we have to make a change. It's for safety reasons, so we don't have a choice on making those changes. We have to make them. The, let me see, what other change we have to have? The air condition, the old six ton air conditioner at the tax office also went out, and there's no remedy. There's no Band-Aids, there's nothing we can do for it, so it's gotta be replaced. So, there.
Can we go back to Commissioner Dewitt? Because I don't think anything that you talked about came out to a hard cost for the county.
You know what? We can pass some of these buildings off to you, Commissioner. But, no. Yes, there is some hard costs that are coming along with this, yeah. Big shout out and thank you to Roden Bridge, guys, thank you. I had a lot of calls on Papaya Road or off of Houston Highway. They said, great job. They appreciate that work you did out there. They said, it was down to a trail already, I think, at the end, toward the end, and y'all got digged up, so much appreciated there. Thank you. I did get a call from the, on Orange Lane, from McGriff's, I think about some limbs. I'm gonna go out there and go see them later, and then I'll get with you guys on that there. And then with Ms. Warnick's. It didn't cost the county, she had her own budget. She's moving into that small office at the, at the Langley Building for her storage? Okay. You like that one better than?
Yes, sir.
Okay. She bought her own shelves, bought her own doorknobs and locks and everything to keep up with the statute, so it didn't cost the county anything there. She took it out.
My contract with them, but it really didn't cost them anything.
And I got a few other calls on some trash on car road. I still gotta go out there and go see where they were at, but other than that, I'll pass them, Commissioner, if I have to.
Good, thank you. So I just wanted to give everyone an update on Crow Park in Skidmore. We're still working on it. Thanks to Teresa Deboska, she did an excellent job of doing a big title research. We still haven't finalized it yet with our attorney. As soon as we can get that done, we'll determine whether we own it or not. So a lot of documentation is here, so more to come with that. Also, I received a call from the developer or the investment company for the gated subdivision in Skidmore off of Corrigan Road. Anyhow, the call was mainly about, wanted to know if the county was willing to adopt their route that they just put in. So I didn't think so, but I would look into it anyway to see what requirements are there. As of today, there were a total of thirty-eight lots, and eleven has been sold so far, so more to come with that. A little bit of an update on the EOC. Things are going well. The power panel alarm, which we had a problem with one of the panel boards, has been fixed that controlled the dampener in event of a fire. Anyhow, the fire marshal will be out there today to issue a certificate of compliance, and then we'll have a official move in there, so that's a good new thing. Also, last week, we had an opportunity to attend the generator startup training, so very intense, very good training that went along. So even though it's on automatic, sometimes they're on automatic to start up, but we have Ryan Garza and Rob Ryan that are there for backup when you're gonna start. Of course, Johnny Zagetti's there as well, too. And then if all those don't work out, then Commissioner Grad to go over there and put his hand on it as well, too. Interesting thing about the generator, at full load, full capacity, it'll burn about thirty-five gallons an hour, so it lasts about two days. Twenty-five percent load lasts about seven days, and we're anticipating that our load, maximum load for what's there now, is gonna be about fourteen percent. So that should last about twelve days with a full tank of diesel, so gives some ample time to do something with it. The parking lot extension, the formation is there. They should be pouring concrete here this week, so things are going there. Again, this might be Road Bridge Day, you know, big shout out to them. They took care of a lot of safety issues throughout Precinct Four, cutting down with the boom mags and cleaning out the roadway, so various locations, they did that. This morning, we're gonna be starting renovations at the JP Four office, putting in, replacing new windows and new doors, which is much needed, so we're going for there. Also, I guess from more information, I met with a local resident in Skidmore expressing concerns with the tax appraisal district. Taxes must have went up, so wasn't too pleased with that, so got a, told who to contact, and hopefully we'll go from there. Had another residence that was having a challenge with getting their inspection sticker based on some ag use, and anyhow, I contacted Michelle Madison, she jumped right on it, and hopefully that situation will get taken care of. We had a, we thought it was a power line in Tynan that fell, the truck must have hit the power line, it was dragging below, couldn't actually reach it with my hand. Of course, I didn't touch it. Anyhow, it wasn't an electrical line, it was a spectrum line, contacted Spectrum. They sent one of their technicians out there immediately, and this week they'll get corrected by their construction team. So thanks for that. So that's about it, Judge. Turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Those are excellent reports, I appreciate it. Let's see, moving on. Moving on to agenda item number six, public comment. Before I ask anybody in the public to come and address Commissioners Court, I would like to ask, is it Ms. or Dr.?
Ms.
Ms. Figueroa, if she would care to come up to the lectern just for a minute? Yeah, and tell us a little bit more about you. Ms. Figueroa, where you're from, how school's going, what your undergrad degree was, just general stuff like that.
Hi, y'all. I'm Maddie Vera. I'm a fourth year medical student, so I'm graduating in May, and then I'll be doctor. I'm from Brownsville, Texas, South Cape Fear, and I've been, and I'm interested in going to pediatric, so I'll be a little baby doctor. And I still don't know yet where I'm gonna go to residency, I found out that's in March November. And I have been doing, these are electives that we do in rural locations, so I have been in Concordia, I've also been in Brownwood, Mason Junction, and then now South Cape Fear again. Just really welcome with the community here. I've been on my own, like shopping around downtown, too, and just meeting everyone at the hospitals and clinics and stuff like that, so I've had a good time, but also met the missionary at the dinner last evening, thank you for all that, with other surgeons and doctors, so I'm very interested in going back home. I do believe I would like to, you know, continue my education in, I did my undergrad in St. Mary's San Antonio, and then now medical school at A&amp;M. I'm at the Brown Rock campus, actually, so I'm living in Brown Rock, Texas. And I'm interested in going back home, practicing, close like in the valley or close to the valley, very interested in working with rural people, and I feel like that's my, that's my, where my passion is, and I just, I've always loved, maybe, you know, walking by them, never had a bad experience, so.
Well, we're so glad that you're here, and we're close to the valley. I mean, we're not that far away, just a short three and a half, four and a half, thirty.
Probably two and a half.
Two and a half, see, it's only two and a half. I was gonna ask the commissioners, they're looking forward to driving down South Park area, wherever it seems.
I really must speak, so, thank you all.
Do Commissioners have any questions? I know this is kind of violated Texas law, but I had intended and I apologize to put you on the agenda, and I forgot, so I'm breaking the rules, saying I'm breaking the rules, but I'm gonna press ahead with an open floor for any questions.
One thing that I would like to say, I was talking to this lady the other night when we were talking, and she's got a fantastic future ahead of her, and I wish her all the luck in the world, but we'd like you to really hang around Beville and B County. And if there's anything, and I'm speaking for the court, anything we can do to help this or to help you, please, don't hesitate to reach out to any of us. We're here to help. That's our job, is to be sure you have what you need to do your job, so please let us know.
You can visit often. Any other questions or anything? Thank you so much for making the effort to come up here and talk to us today, really appreciate it, and best of luck to all your future donors.
Thank you.
And there's no commitment that you stay. You're more than welcome to, but I want you to know you don't have to sit there and stay if you don't want to. All right. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address Commissioners Court? Now is the time. Okay, moving on, agenda item number seven. The following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioners Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a Commissioner or County Judge.
Will you approve?
I have a motion to approve. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Monthly reports were submitted, and they ship, they usually go in the second week of the month, so that's an auditor error, so just so the commission material report, that you'll see these again next.
In a couple of weeks?
Yes, and it'll be an updated submission sheet with the reports as well.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about that at all? Hearing none, then I'll go ahead and take the vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you for that. All right. Moving on, discuss and consider action on the following items. Agenda item number eight, approved professional services contract for forensic pathologist to provide autopsy and related services at contracted funeral home facility.
Move to approve the comment.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I have it.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Dewitt, you have the floor.
Yes, Judge, this is mainly for our new chair. Couple of years ago, we got into a real buy-in on finding someone to do autopsies. I'm sure you, physician, you're doing the same thing. This is Dr. Fernandez in Corpus, and he's been doing this for us for a while, and doing a great job, so I think this FYI, because we even looked at trying to bring a company into B County to set up a business here, and they said there weren't enough deaths in the area. We reached out to every direction we could, because it was, it was getting serious.
Oh, thanks. So we got you to Lockhart. So we are, so we've got, this is, this provides continuing options to our JP's on autopsy needs. We now have three levels. We have three options. This, the Rockstown entity, the Lockhart entity, and out of Lockhart, kind of associated with Lockhart, but separately, is a lady that has a new company, that sometimes all that's needed for a autopsy is blood work, and so she has this blood work company that dramatically reduces the cost, you don't have to send a body off for a full autopsy if you only need to know or confirm that there's no, you know, issue in the, in the blood screening, toxicology, so, so the JP's now have three options, and I haven't heard it of being an issue that they've had, they've had the resources.
Real bad homicide or murder.
Yeah, it was on the side of some series. They would do an autopsy wherever we have a contract with, or, you know, Lockhart or Dr. Fernandez. I worked with him before when I was in Corpus, now he has his own company there, I guess. But yeah, you know, we would request an autopsy, get with the judge, the JP, and ask for that.
And I know the last couple of years, with particularly sensitive matters such as that, which there've been a few in the county over the last couple of years, first choice was Lockhart. I know that the Lockhart doctor is way overlooked, so I don't know if that's changed or not. Anything further? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, Sheriff, for your comments as well. Agenda item number nine, approve intragovernmental agreement between B County and the Pettis Municipal Utilities District for the Texas General Land Office, twenty twenty-two, community development block grant mitigation, regional allocation method of distribution program. Holy cow, that's a lot of movement. I've got a motion.
I'll second, I thought the Pettis were gonna be here.
That's all right. I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Just to add, this is part of the GLO grant that you worked on for the COWG, and this is the next step, and we're glad to, hoping to give us a moment. Fingers crossed, yeah, I got that promising email a couple of weeks ago, settled it out. Hopefully, things are going good for B County.
Ms. Renner might not add some computers?
No, that's, that's fine.
You sure?
Yeah. It's just the midwives, we're going on almost two years now. We submitted all of the RFIs that have been requested with Grant Works, they've been assisting us, so we are hopefully on the tail end of getting that money very soon.
And correct if I'm wrong, this is mainly for infrastructure and Pettis sewer and water system.
Correct.
We directed everything in our precinct to Pettis, because that stuff was put in the forties and fifties, and it's crumbling.
Yes, Pettis and Tynan and the two bridges is what this happened.
Right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Ms. Renner. Agenda item number ten, approve project agreement between B County and the Tynan Water Supply Corporation for the Texas General Land Office, twenty twenty-two, community development block grant mitigation, regional allocation method of distribution program. Move to approve?
Aye.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. We are cooking with gas, folks. Agenda item number eleven, approve quote to widen expo auditorium doors for the installation of new air conditioning units. Commissioner Lenny, this is your agenda item. You have the floor, sir.
I met with Mr. Beck the other day, and what we looked at doing to get those air conditions inside the building, bring up the widening, the double doors, and we decided over by the concession stand, they're gonna take and widen those out so we can put two four-foot wide by eight-foot tall doors in, and he said that if the court approves it, what they can do, Beck can start tomorrow. the court approves it, what they can do, Beck can start tomorrow morning on getting all that cut out, because Waylon's ready to get those out of his shop there, Smuckles. So they'll widen all that out, then Waylon then can get the ACs in there, and then they'll go back and board it, it's gonna take about two weeks to get those doors in. So they'll go back after that and install everything, and then to, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna do one AC first over by the stage, I believe, and they'll cut that wall out, pull it to the side, pull that AC out, put the new one in, put the wall back, and then when that's all done, then they'll do the other side, so I'm doing both at the same time and getting out completely. I spoke with Wally, he said there wasn't anything going on in February, it'd be a great month to do it, so it's not gonna interfere with any events or anything like that. I spoke with Madam Monitor, and gave her the proposal, and she said, well, good, we have the money to do it, and, uh, if we do that, if we do that, the wider doors, it's always gonna be used for, you know, you got events, you got bands and stuff coming in, they can use that instead of, uh, if they come in by the stage and they're taking that bar off, and, and, and that, so, it'll be a good thing.
You answered all the questions that I have, excellent, thank you, great representation. Does that motion?
That is my motion to approve this proposal by Beck Brothers to do this job.
Oh, second.
I've got a second.
And the amount that I see is fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That is very recent.
Was that a lot of hot funds or?
Yes, that, that's what I would recommend, is to use, uh, C-Hot, um, there's, there's a human in there.
I think I heard you say C-Hot.
Yeah, I think, and I, that's definitely C-Hot.
Your motion was proven?
Yes, I motioned for C-Hot, yes.
And then we also just talked about, um, you know, the dance floor, really protecting it as much as we could, getting the, because one of those units is gonna have to go over the dance floor. So like, you know, that is something that we talked about, and getting, you know, maintenance , uh, smuggle to make sure that those dancers are protected.
Yeah, we need to lay like, move like it's down, like apply wood on top of that, so they get their little, in there and not hurt the, but, so, I'll, I'll accept that.
Oh, something that, that I thought about too, is having to check those other doors, I understand some of them need a little work, is that something we need to look at this time?
I spoke to Robert about that, the, uh, the door, the double door by the stage, um, what happens is, the people that rent the expo, like the bands and stuff that come in, they take that center bar out to get their equipment in, and when they go put it back, sometimes they don't put it back correctly. And we've had one, yes, that particular one has fallen, and, yes, so, I talked about that, but really and truly, that bar just needs to be put in correctly and tightened up with the good bolts and it'll stabilize.
And we'll have the smooth entrance, the?
The smooth entrance will be wider, and, um, the discussion came about whether to do, um, the double doors without the center bar, um, which would be kinda like a French door, once that door goes into the concrete, goes up into the beam, and you have a plate on the backside with the, the door swing into and lock, but it's, it's just not as secure as having that center bar.
Okay.
So being able to remove that center bar, then you have an eight-by-eight opening, you know, you know, it's a shy of that, because the door, but I think it'd be much better and safer to do that center bar.
Good to hear about the, um, installation method, because I've, I've experienced in the past where the doors go up and they try to get the piece of equipment in and damage the door, so, it's, it's too far processed, isn't it? Good job, good job.
There's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number Twelve, set public hearing date pursuant to Texas Transportation Code Chapter Two-Five-Three entitled County Improvement of Subdivision Roads, Bernance, Two Thousand Three, to consider placement of two no-through truck signs from North Farm to Market Road Three Fifty-One on North Airport Road and County Road Three O-One to Farm to Market Road Six Seventy-Three in Bee County. Which is Agenda?
Well, I'll talk to my head, he's the head.
Okay, well, we'll just do that.
You talk to your head, yeah, I've got some.
On the same, on the same, at the same time, on three.
No, just, we've had the complaints, those, the two companies that are over there off of Airport Road are using the, uh, County Road Three O-One off of Six Seventy-Three as a shortcut, and they're coming through little big heavy trucks, pretty fast, pretty hard.
Coming up past McCoys.
Uh, behind McCoys and they go all the way down, and they do that zigzag by the, by your, what's it, Whitten pit?
Yeah.
By the pit, and then going out. So they're, they're using that as a, instead of going to the four-way stop, coming on Three Fifty-One on the truck route, they're using that as a shortcut.
I mean, what happens especially when they hit those, that, to the ninety-degree turn, they've gotta cut across the whole thing, and if you're there in a vehicle, you're gonna have to back up, there's no room. Uh, one thing that I would add is that.
What'd you add?
On my head. Once we get this passed by the court, I will go talk to both those companies and let them know what we're doing, because it's gonna be a little confusing, where Reyes Road hits Airport Road, one of them exits to the right, and we're gonna have the sign way over here on the left at Three Fifty-One. But I will go talk to both of them and say, okay, guys, here's the problem, here's what we're gonna do. I'll go in official capacity and talk to whoever manager, if we need your cooperation, this is what we're forced to do, and we wanna be sure that everybody knows this.
Great.
That, do you?
Oh, yes, sir.
Because that, that's, that's more in your head than mine.
That's fine. Hey, man, I think this is great, I love to see people working together, and that's what you get in Bee County, is you get that cohesion.
Absolutely.
Uh, so wonderful job, uh, to date and prospectively in the future, gentlemen.
Well, and I have to give all the credit to Commissioner Feliz, he ran with the football, he got it going, he got it to this point, so thank you, sir.
Good job.
You're welcome, sir.
All right, feels good to get kudos, you know, and it's important.
And a little pay.
And a little pay.
So, um, back to the nature, uh, of the, uh, Agenda Item, and do we have a date? Uh, do we wanna set this public hearing?
Do we have to go thirty days, or what's the exact date?
You have to put the newspaper for two weeks of use for today.
Okay, so maybe two to March, two commissioners away?
Yes, sir.
March the tenth?
At ten AM?
That would be my motion, guys. Does that give, uh?
Does that, does that give?
Does that give them time to get that, notice and newspaper?
She's in front of you.
I believe it can be done with two seconds.
Be fit.
And I'll, I'll second that.
So we've got a motion to set the public hearing for March tenth. Ed, did y'all say, ten AM? Any further discussion on this item?
You think the road bridge back here?
All right. I'm ready to go.
Okay.
Sheriff, we'll have a new place for you to check out around that, and say, of course, enough trucks are being, enough trucks.
That was handy, it's right in the back door.
Yeah. Mr. Yen said, you already be a, wait, oh, good.
He said if it passes, just let me know, and I'll make that regular.
Oh, yeah, their turn to load it.
There's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception, thank you, gentlemen. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, approved bid to fix electrical issues at Community Affairs Building, Commissioner Feliz.
Uh, this is the one that I spoke about earlier, uh, gentlemen, the box coming in from the road, from the street, that connects the power to that building, is the original box that was put there when they built the building, and, uh, I think they went to go take care of a couple of issues inside, there was a shortage there, and also when John was there, they went to go disconnect to turn the power off, and power never turned off. So it's kind of eaten away on the inside, needs to be replaced as soon as possible, I've got a bid, I've taken it to the auditor already.
Mr. This would be an emergency also.
Yes, so, no, they're ready to go as soon as we.
It's definitely an emergency.
Uh, Mr. Speckel's gone out there and you go, go, and get after it quick, and, uh, you have that total?
Well, the, um, it's not on this.
I tried to total it up and it's kinda interesting, but I couldn't really get there.
Yeah, well, it's not on this one.
Uh, it's a twenty-four thousand?
We don't know, we don't, maybe there is a second page with the total on it?
A third page, actually.
I said, I did, I did.
Yeah, I don't have that.
I don't, I don't, I mean, yes, I scanned it, I, I started. Not to exceed twenty-five thousand, how's that?
That'll work, that'll work.
Perfect.
That's your motion?
That's my motion, sir.
Click on the draw.
I didn't have keys.
No, it was, he's, he's. You get that, right? All right, uh, there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception, thank you for getting this handled quickly.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, we can, uh, accommodate Sandra and, uh, Randy and, uh, Kathy and the ESO.
Yeah.
Tiffany, we can find a place to put them, however many days they're out of town. We've got that new EOC building, all that space, nobody's doing anything, but maybe we're just doing them all in there.
I'll have a, I'll have a, if you wanna go to the emergency room, which is.
I would recommend emergency.
They have to do a budget amendment, um, for this.
And does that give them authority to tell them, go?
Well, this, this approval.
Yeah, once we pass it, I'll, I'll give, uh, they're waiting for us to call if it is an issue.
Yes, it is.
So, no, this is good.
That's two kudos in the road.
You're just getting your, your softer, your.
He's ready to take on another building.
We're gonna have to get the doors, right?
Yeah.
Be a gear guy.
No.
I said you, I said you were ready to take on another building.
Yeah, let's discuss that, no, let's not discuss that, we don't even need to discuss it, that's fine, Commissioner Feliz is ready. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Fourteen, approved tax assessor collector's request to use the county credit card on March third, twenty twenty-five for registration and hotel accommodations for TACCA Conference May thirty-first to June fourth, twenty twenty-five. Move to approve? I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Energy from the first ten Agenda Items. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, approved district attorney's request to use county credit card for vista print purchase of business cards and stationery envelopes. Move to approve? I have a motion and a second, that was Commissioner DeWitt, was that one? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, approved to renew agreement for Vanguard Management and Imaging System between CoFile, GovOS, and Bee County Clerk's Office.
I think we paused this because we wanted her to give us some information.
Yeah, and, and we have a new, uh, PowerPoint, come on up to the lectern, Ms. Bridge, or Terry, whoever needs to.
Actually, um, we just were asking for the court to renew this, um, agreement that we started in two thousand nineteen, um, we're, I'm sorry, um, we're Vanguard Management and Imaging System, those are indexing and all of our, um, public records, our, um, documents as far as our needs, and they put them online for us, um, and make it accessible to the public.
This was another one, I was having a hard time tracking the dollars, what is the total amount?
Um, it was a five-year contract and. Yes, two sixty-four, five oh nine thirty, and that was over a five-year period.
So. Yeah, so I had, I had several courses trying to understand the contract, and, and, you know, thanks Terry here for helping me get all the information. So when reviewing the contract, you know, in twenty nineteen, oh seven, I think the program, let me just keep it out that way, uh, the process of obtaining these records, I think it's a good system to have, and I think, which is out of, the, the county out of trouble locating these records. What caught my eye though is that this initial contract was a five-year contract, and then each year, it, the total, I guess it's two hundred and seven thousand, and then this year, starting in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, it went up to two hundred and sixty-four thousand, five oh nine, that's a pretty significant increase, I'm just curious what caused the increase, and then on top of that, I did, uh, reach out, uh, to this, uh.
Marina Caston?
Marina, yeah, and she was telling me that it's a five percent per year, so every year it's gonna increase five percent. So is that on top of this two sixty-four that it's gonna increase?
No, it's, it's included in there, every year it's gone, it'll go at five percent.
Okay, so the dollar amounts that are showing on, on this presentation, that's what it's gonna go up to?
Yes, sir.
So, in this year one, where the annual is thirty-six hundred dollars per month, and then is that include the five percent, or five percent's gonna be added to that?
That should include the five percent. It should be included in there.
Are you sure?
I don't, I can, I can, um, verify that with Ms. Marina, she is available, she, um, is watching right now, and she is available, soon have that call, we'll call.
All right, let's get on the phone.
Before we get on the phone, I guess one, one question, so Michelle. So, before we get on the phone, I guess one, one question, so Michelle.
Thank you so much.
I had to, I had to do this not too long ago.
Second time's a lot of evil.
So I was glad that it worked. I don't know how to do all this, I don't know. Did you like how I just touched it? Sort of. It's supposed to work, touch it. You just, you just call like you're calling out, so just a, I think it's just a long-distance number.
Could I dial one?
Just three sales? Oh, you don't have to dial one? Never got that figured out, phone systems are so hard these days.
Well, it's in Fund Fourteen, and, uh, that fund has lost, um, about twenty thousand annually since twenty twenty-three, um, it's gone down, and written about twenty, thirty thousand.
Good morning.
Sarah. Hi, good morning, ma'am, my name's George Morley.
Good morning.
I'm the Bee County Judge, I'm sitting here, uh, in open court, uh, I've got four commissioners with me, and I'm gonna turn the floor over to Commissioner Olivares. Commissioner?
Okay, very well, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, General.
Good morning, and thanks for taking my call late Friday afternoon to help explain how the contract works and some of the details about it, so, uh, overall, I kicked off the session.
And I just wanted to let you know, I am listening, I was watching the, um, the meeting, um, through the channels available, and, um, all the fees are included, there's no, there's not gonna be any additional fees added to this, all the numbers are right there in, in that quotation that was submitted.
Okay, uh, and then one of the other things that we talked about, you know, is there any opportunity to, uh, enhance any kind of a discount back to the county, because it is a substantial amount of increase?
Right, um, it is, it is very standard, um, and I, I'll be, you know, because I was, I spoke with you on Friday, I'm, I'm very new to the Texas account, but from what I understand, I did, all, all the renewals that I have reviewed and researched from the time of the previous, um, customer success manager left are very similar, five percent increases over, you know, year over year, um, the, as the county continues to record every year, uh, more storage is necessary, more to, to, to maintain these records, and that, that is part of, you know, part of doing business, is your, the memory and, and everything, the storage that's necessary increases, so that's, that's one of the reasons why they have that, um, the continuing, um, you know, we host the, the external website where the e-commerce handle, you know, where people can go in and get copies, that's something that we handle as well, so, um, all of those are included in there. All of those are included in there, there's not going to be any additional fees that are, that pop up over time.
Okay, so just a couple of questions for clarity here, if you could explain to the court, when you say standard, I'm not sure what that means, I don't know what standard.
Well, we have, yeah, we have several counties within Texas that use our system. And as the renewals that were, you know, these are linked, definitely will take place in counties, or in any other state. Like just, just to let you know, we've got San Francisco just south of you is on the system. General, Goliad, Patio, these are all counties that have the system, and, and the five percent standards, that just means that's what the renewals that we offer them is to say.
Ma'am, my name's Commissioner Dennis Teague, but I have a question that came up before, while we put this back on the agenda. Basically, when someone goes to the internet and pulls that information off, your copy derives a fee from them, is that correct?
Well, the, the online records are a dollar per page, that is something that, that's what, that goes back to the county, it's not retained by GOBOS. What we retain is a two-dollar credit card convenient transaction fee, and that's so that, because we are the ones who are hosting, who actually retain the credit card processing fee for the backup, so that two dollars per transaction is what we take back to, to replace that, that fee, so that the county doesn't have to do it, the county doesn't have to come up with, you know, they don't have to pay for those fees. And every dollar for an online copy, it goes straight back to the county.
Okay, I guess that was a question, because we, we, I was a little confused as to whether we were actually getting that, that dollar back, is that, that is correct, we are getting that, that dollar?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm looking at our, our clerk in the back, back row.
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
Okay.
Yeah. Every month, every month that is reconciled, then about mid-month from, for, for the next month, it checks us out to repay that, to reimburse the county for the, the fees of that, that we obtained on your behalf.
This is Commissioner Tino Alvarez again, so just for clarity, so I've got two documents, finally first that I was given last week, and then one we got offline. So on initial look at the numbers on the return of dollars back to the county, it comes up to about one percent, one and a half percent of the guests are getting back for those records. The other part that I'm noticing, on one sheet I had for the year.
I'm sorry, what, what sheet are you talking about?
Yeah, in your presentation, there was one presentation that had a year date for 2024. It showed, when you add up the, the total sums from ten one to ten twenty-nine, was three thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars. And then on the second presentation, it shows for 2024 that returned back to the county was five thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars, to a total of seven hundred and sixty-one, so which, which one is it?
Yeah, at, at the time that, I mean, the original presentation was, the year hadn't been, hadn't been completed yet, so it was still in October. They, I think that the numbers that we're giving to you were through the month of Octo, through that month of October. Twenty, the ones that are, the most current presentation, twenty twenty-four had completed, so the five thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven is, is correct.
Okay, so that, that'll increase that percentage up a little bit.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't catch that.
No, I was just telling the court that, you know, a percent on return investment, that increases a little bit, not, not a whole lot there, but I think the bigger value that they're saying here is our record-keeping, that we're able to keep within the county. Also, the, you know, the last, I was asking about metadata that was being maintained, but the, the main thing that it does here is what they call OCR, which is Optical Character Recognition. So basically, you can go type in a word, and it'll pull up any information concerned that. We, I, I challenged her on Friday, and we did a quick search on Crow Park, and where I got a little bit concerned about the data that's in there, of course, you know, the database is only good as a data. You know, we pulled up all this information, and you can't see what I have on my hand, but there's a lot of records that we manually pulled from the court. But when we tried to pull it up on the system, we only pulled up the two documents, and she helped me pull it up to make sure that Tino wasn't doing the wrong stuff, so. You know, that, that created another anomaly, and, you know, what's being maintained there, is it correct or not correct? But overall, Judge, and Commissioners, I think it's a good system, I think we should continue to maintain it. I was just concerned about, you know, is there additional discounts that the county could potentially receive for this service? You know, going up, you know, fifty-six thousand dollars in one year. It sounds like a portion of that is going towards cloud storage, is there any other areas that it's, that's causing the increase?
Uh, you know, cloud stor, you know, the storage, yes, of course, and, you know, just continuing to maintain the system and, and continuing to provide support for, for the clerk's office, the land records management system, you know, is core to the county clerk's office and what they do. They are record, you know, the keeper of the records, and this is, you know, they, they have to adhere to these all throughout, you know, whatever is, is state mandated, and, you know, all clerks are to do that. This system that we have here is, is pretty top-of-the-line for some of the, you know, as, as in comparison to some of the other land record management systems that are out there. So, that being said, you know, there, there are increases, of course, to, you know, uplifts that, that have to, have to happen for, for software. As far as the discount, I mean, yeah, definitely, I take that back to, it, it's just that at this point, this, this agreement was expired in November. November seventeen, I believe is when it expired, and currently, we're needing to get the renewal over the line in order for it to move forward. We've got any other options in service or anything like that. But, I guess my question is, what, what sort of, I mean, we, we constantly have new things that are coming out, new, new products. I guess maybe moving forward, we could consider maybe, if there are any of those products that are, you know, are interesting to, to Ms. Bridge, maybe we could waive like implementation fees or something like that, so that you're, continue to be, so this county continues to be cutting edge when it comes to their records, records, when, you know, land records management system. Is that something?
So, yeah, so, so two questions, great, thanks for, for explaining that better. So I guess the, the first question I have is around maintenance, is that your architectural engineers that are doing a design?
Yeah, it, it's maintenance, yeah, maintenance includes support and continuing to, you know, the, any, any releases that are made, any objects that are made to the system, those are all automatically included in the land records management system. And any, any updates to state mandates, any legislation changes that need to be addressed, those are done without, without any extra charge, because, you know, if there are legislative changes, then we just include them in, in parts to support. So, you know, there's just a lot of behind the scenes that, you know, people don't realize happen. A lot of the records that are on the system right now, like you mentioned, go back, they're archival, they're, they're historic. They need, and available to the public to be on to the website, which some counties do not have that, they don't have that. People have to go into the county and look at the books, and that's a great, the physical book. So having the online part of it, the digitized records is, is, you know, paramount in keeping the records as, as good as they can be.
Moving forward. So Judge and Commissioners and Michelle, I guess some of the option that we had talked to her about was that we don't currently have within our system, so as an example, staff and public training, that is an option or an add-on. And what it sounds like, there might be an opportunity that they could come and add some of these services under the current rate. So, you know, seven twenty-four, you know, health desk services and public inquiries, right now, all those are options to the county, but they're not included in the fee that we're trying to pay.
Yeah, we work with the county, and we want to work with, with Ms. Bridge and her staff. So by the time that she brings my attention, hey, and we've got constituents who are not very aware of our online system, then they may be able to do like an online, like a webinar, where we invite some of the public to come see how to search my records. So those are options that are available, we could do, you know, that definitely are they able to, to the clerk's office, but she can ask for them on behalf of the Commissioner's Court or something like that. So we're happy to do things like that and always, because I, I feel like if there's questions, if people aren't using the system, then, then we need to do better in making sure that you have the opportunity to tell what the system looks like. And everyone has the, you know, the availability and the options to look in and understand what's, what's in the records.
Ma'am, this is George Morrell, B County Judge. Do you know off the top of your head, or do any of the Commissioners recall, or Ms. Bridge, if you know, or Terry, or anybody else in the audience has the answer to this question? How far back in our records do we, are our records fully OCR'd for the text? Because I know it's not all of the records.
It's the deeds, the deed indices.
Any records that we have online that are not handwritten, of course handwritten documents are not going to be available for the, for the OCR. But, I mean, historically, any record, I don't have the exact.
Okay, well, because I, I, there were different levels, in 2019, there were different levels of OCR and different costs associated with that. And, so it is, the OCR was restricted to deed records. But I know that before a certain date, it's, at least I recall, before a certain date, the only metadata added to those scanned files would be recording information, grant or grantee name, but not an actual OCR of the document. I believe now, the instruments, you know, current and future instruments that are recorded are fully OCR'd, is that correct?
Yeah, so one of the conversion processes, processes that happen is whenever you're going from a pre-existing to our, to our, to our system, is all of those records go through an OCR process, where they actually are going through an optical, optical character recognition process. And when they're added to cloud search, if that is available, if it's something, you know, if it's not a handwritten doc, doesn't have handwritten notation, if it's text that was readable, it should have been OCR. I don't know what that depth of record is, just off here, but when I do a, a search for all records, and just to let you know, on the search side, it goes back to, instead it goes back to nineteen hundred, and that could just be because some of those records actually don't have a recording date entered. But if you go all the way back, and there's a document in there, you'll see that there, like this one here, is all the way back to, let me look here, I'm just looking at an actual document on, on the site, it tells me that it is, that I can read it, and it's back to nineteen twenty-one. And that's in volume fifteen of the deeds of trust records, so it wasn't just deeds, it was, it appears that it's also deeds of trust. So I encourage everyone to maybe get onto that site and do some looking around to see how far back that, those records are, and how you can do a search for any one of those, if it's text, it, it should be recognized as, as OCR'd.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I actually got to play with the system a little bit prior to this, thanks to Teresa Sheed, who gave me a lot of, there's a lot of good information. I guess Marina, my, my biggest thing for the court here is just to try and understand this increase in cost, where did it come from? I hear the word maintenance, but it's, you know, maybe, maybe it's standard, so, I was just kind of curious what it was, and I think you may have.
Yeah, yeah.
It sounded just quite wild and engineering.
I understand what that's a question, maintenance is a broad term for all of it, of course, anything that happens, the, the background that's being done, trying to seem, database, you know, keeping the database, keeping everything safe, keeping everything microfilmed. There's a microfilm piece in there, that's, that's part of this contract, that allows for these documents to be imaged in micro, microfiche format. So that is all included in there, and because it is an extension, you could probably read as if the original contract has some of the, has some of the reasons, you know, has some of the product that are included.
Great, thank you, sir.
No, no, I was just kind of reaching out to Madam Barker and maybe anyone else on the court, is this a typical increase?
There is always an increase. And I, I know just from the revenues, from twenty-three to twenty-four, we had a fifteen thousand dollar revenue decrease, and from twenty-four to twenty-five, a ten thousand dollar revenue decrease. So what I'm going to, to recommend is to do a line item transfer to the county clerk's for her office supplies, because it doesn't look like she's going to be able to fully take over the. But it should be in there, we're going to probably have to reevaluate the transfer from this fund, because we do a transfer out of record management for both District Court and County Court to the general fund to help with their software, like that's on the other side. So we might have to evaluate that during the budget.
Is, is this dollar a page something we need to look at and possibly increase, can we legally increase the cost?
Y'all can, Commissioner's Court can.
We can? Because it's been that for a long time, and it sounds like we're going in a hole.
Yes.
Ten thousand, one year fifteen, another year, could be something that you might want to take a look at, Ms. Bridge, if you bring it to the court, to increase that, that minimum fee from the dollar to something else.
Sure.
It was intended, I mean, it's all to us as a revenue generator, and, and on the dollar a fee, you know, there's countyrecords.com, which I use in my law practice frequently for most counties, and it's one dollar, but there is like a minimum, so maybe that's something, a dollar a page or a minimum.
We used to charge two dollars for certified copies, but then, when we started the new system, went back with Mikel and Kathy Brolet, who started this and presented to the courts, which Mr. Dewatt, you were the only one on the ward, all of the R and E to this, they changed it to a dollar, because they said that was the statute, the minimum that we could charge in every other county.
If I may, if I may add, there are, there is statute behind how much they would charge for a copy within the due sentence.
Do you have that number?
I, I believe it, yes, I believe, from what, from, just from my history from, and from all of the other counties, it is a dollar. It is typically, it is a dollar everywhere, indeed, it's a dollar per page.
You don't have the statute number, though?
No, I, I don't have the statute number, I don't have.
Well, it's a county clerk, well, it's a county clerk, take it down.
Any further questions? Thank you so much for taking the call and spending some time with us, we really appreciate your clarity and additional background information as we consider this contract, ma'am.
You're very welcome, I'm here to help if you have any more questions, just let me know.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you, Marina.
Thank you, Marina. You're welcome, goodbye.
Okay, any further discussion? Mrs. Bridge, is there, Ms. Bridge, is there anything further that you'd like to address the court as far as this goes?
No, thank you for your time.
Recommendation is that we approve this contract as presented?
Yes, sir.
Not entertaining motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Thank you all, it's good to have a lively discussion, especially and even on dry topics. But it is, it is important, so thank you all for your time, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
For your presentation, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number seventeen, approved audit engagement letter between B County and Patio, Brown, and Hill LLP for fiscal year 2024 audit. Move to approve. Have a motion and a second, I think I heard Commissioner Olivares with a second. Any further discussion? It seems like we're doing the audit all.
Well, no.
We are, every year, all, I mean, all of that, everybody's always being audited. And every court that you're on is always being audited.
That's a good thing.
That is a good thing.
Transparency is.
And we can answer any questions of the county auditor's office.
About county auditor business, any question, that's a lot of problems.
Fiscal matters.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda item number eighteen, approved to award RFP twenty-four dash twenty, or slash twenty-five dash zero zero two Waste Management Services for B County. Is this my agenda item?
This is actually.
This is actually, Rowan Bridge is in charge of this one. We put RPL, and Rowan Bridge should have the recommendation for the part.
Yeah, we, we did, because we get better service than all the other, we, we just get more. We had it for four years already, and, you know, there was always backing up, you know, anything we had to.
So is your, is your recommendation to stay with our current contractor, Frontier K2 LLC?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a recommendation? Commissioners, Court, do you all have any questions?
What is the amount?
There is like sheet that's attached and so it does.
It, it's all, it varies, that, I'm, it all varies, just reading, I'm just saying, you can't get a total because each, each item is different.
Right. The audit fees for Skidmore is $550 Frontier, and for minerals, $650. Audit fees for Tines is, for Tines, $45 per time.
I think following Commissioner Wett, I guess just kind of a total, a big number here, you know, what are we looking at? Yeah, and we came to get there because we don't have much left, we're going to haul it. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Approve the rates.
And the company.
And the service, right, because the service also has to go into the one that you choose.
Right.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Based upon the, Rowan Bridge recognition. One second.
I've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, and I appreciate the additional justification on service. So, moving on, agenda item number 19, approved obtaining a credit card for the Sheriff's Office investigations for travel purposes.
Now, yes. So, during Commissioners' Court, Commissioner Paeus has been vigorously studying companies, and he's ready to provide us with a summation of, a translation of credit cards. I don't think, I think we can, Judge, I think the sheriff just asked for one of these investigators.
Of course, Sheriff, yeah. We're getting way off.
Judge, Commissioners, the Sheriff's Office is asking the Court for approval for a travel card utilized by our CID Department, our Criminal Investigation Division. We came upon that last week. One of our CID investigators is working a, a case with the, with the Texas Ranger from Beeville on, and not to get into it because it's still under investigation, but the investigation's going to lead to out of state. And the investigator's going to go along with the Texas Ranger to interview a suspect up there. And we have time to, to work out the details right now. Most likely, he'll, you know, stay with the Ranger, the Ranger will pick up the cause, things like that. But other times, usually events happen late at night or on the weekends where we get called to a murder or, or another hazardous crime, and the investigator is, you know, hot on the, on the trail of the suspect. And it may take us out of town, it may take us to Houston, San Antonio, or even out of state. When I was a Ranger, I worked those type of cases where you get called out and in five hours, you're on your way out of state somewhere. And things like that, we were hoping to get a travel card where the investigator doesn't have to worry about paying for a room, board, if he has to stay somewhere for a day or two. Any other trainings? We have time to get a PO and make reservations, but in an emergency, I would like for the investigator to have one card that's assigned to the Sheriff's Office. It can be in the Sheriff's Department's name, and we issue that card to an investigator if he has to go out of town. I would probably take custody of that card, or we would put it in the office somewhere where the investigator can go ahead and check it out and take it with. And it just kind of, he doesn't need that burden to put it on his card. And then, I know we get reimbursed pretty quick, but it may take two weeks, and, you know, that cost on his credit card, and he's, you know, piling up the interest fee on it, and he has to pay for that. So this would help with the travel expense. And I think I visited with the auditor, and, you know, we talked about paying it off on a monthly basis, and we may not use it that much, it may be once or twice a year. It's just for those type of investigations, and it would only be for the criminal investigation investigators. That's what it would be used for. Any other travel, we have time to prepare for it and to give POs and do that stuff, but just in an emergency.
Thank you, Sheriff. Madam Auditor, is this a situation where the monthly credit card bills will run through your office, so you go up and review on it? And I, I don't anticipate anything being wrong, there's just checks and balances.
So there's a corporate credit card, which is, I mean, what was attached, which I didn't attach any, we didn't have it in attached. But it's a lengthy credit card app, and so if this is approved, then, you know, I can go ahead and fill this out, and when she just signed that, Judge, I will need a credit limit, but all, I mean, our company credit limit, but it's a corporate credit card, we would have 20, 45 days to pay it off, so it would not accrue interest, and it would be for, for those emergency purposes, as the sharing.
If you would, both of us worked in the state of Texas. Yes, Sheriff, when I worked in the state, I had one.
I did too.
And we were limited to $2,000 a day. And there were guidelines, and one of the guidelines, no alcohol. No alcohol, get your up on the credit. So I'm sure we would kind of use those state guidelines with the credit card. And using those state guidelines, I don't have a single problem, and I think it's a good idea. I'd really do.
Well, I would, I would also request policy to follow.
Yes, and what we can do, Sheriff, if you can get a copy of those state guidelines.
Yes, sir.
Get them to the auditor, get them to the Policy Committee, so we can take a look at those and tweak what we need to, because they've already, they've already crossed the bridge.
Yes, I'd like it part of the procurement, part of my auditor's office procurement procedures.
Absolutely.
So it would be through, through my office, and I would submit it to.
Absolutely. I think it's a great idea.
So that we can work together on that, Sheriff.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
So, really, what I need, just by kind of perusing this, besides the signature of the judge, which is the credit limit, is the rest of the information. So, what would your recommendation be? And this is for the, for the 45 days, right? Would.
Sheriff, what did the state move their limit per day to?
I don't know what per day, but we had a, an extensive, I mean, a limit on our cards.
Yeah, ours was $2,000 a day. We're not having, it's a reasonable record.
Honestly, I mean, I don't know if we had a limit on our cards, because those cards were issued in our name, so if the, if you paid, you were responsible for it.
We had to have the, the input.
It's $5,000?
Yeah, I would say $5,000.
Because, you know, if you're looking at claim.
We're looking at, yeah.
All that stuff, it could run up real quick.
This is true.
I don't think that is sufficient.
Hundred a day?
No.
No.
Five thousand.
I didn't live in.
You're going to lose it!
You're going to be going for a couple of days.
Can I sit in honorary CID? And I need to, otherwise, it's going to make you better.
I think five is fair enough, or, you know, if they had.
If we need to come back and change it, of course, we always can, Sheriff.
I, I, I think it's a great idea, Sheriff.
And of course, we'll turn in receipts and all that stuff. Now, if that's just a travel card, that doesn't include their meals, they have to pay a pocket for that?
Well, I would fix the same.
This is an emergency situation.
I would include all that, just no alcohol.
Well, yes, and that's going to be included in policy, but this is for.
This would cover the whole trip.
Travel purposes, which would be.
Investigative purposes.
My meals, your priviums, which we have a limit on.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think that's fair.
I'll make a motion, we proceed, and we look at $5,000 limit, and if the procurement information go to the auditor's office, you all come up with a procurement plan, and we'll take a look at it.
Second, would you comment? I think Commissioner Marina, but she do have a comment, so you have the floor.
No, I think this is a great idea, especially for the individuals. I know in the past, when I've had staff working for me, you know, it's a burden on them to share or put forth these expenses and then try and get it back through the system. It's not, not for us.
And, and the county, you know, I'll be honest, the county reimburses very quickly. The state, it was six or eight weeks. It was, it was tough.
It was, yeah.
It was.
We try.
Y'all do good.
We know what a burden it is for me to do this.
Y'all do very well. You do.
Thank you, Commissioner Eligatus, for those comments. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. And ladies? Agenda item number 20, Hurricane Harvey, Texas, General Land Office, GLO, Community Development Block Grant, CWBG status and project update. Gentlemen?
Judge, I believe all of us, we all get an email on the projects that we're going to go forward?
I think so.
Okay. Just real quick, over the, over the projects, the FM 631 Bridge Improvement is $1,003,13,379. The Fettis Mud Sewer Improvements is $513,003,27. Fettis Mud Water Improvements is $1,001,85,629. The Silver Creek Bridge Improvements is $965,009,27. Tinen Sewer Improvements is $435,161. Tinen Water Improvements is $288,177. And those are the projects that are outlined and that we've been working on since, like, May, two years ago. Okay. There is a couple of stipulations that are coming up, the Fettis Mud and the Tinen, people are going to have to update the schedule and include the, I mean, how they're going to maintain these, that's going to be one of the items on there. So we need to give the Fettis and say, hey, you get this new equipment, what's your, what's your projected maintenance and things like that? That's one of the items that they ask for. And the other one, we already did, the MOU, so moving forward, I mean, once we get those, the levels in, we should be projecting, hopefully, to get this money.
Sounds great. Any Commissioner?
No, I think that's exactly what's.
Oh, that'd be a big boost to the county boards, those projects. Yeah, well, good work. Thank you. Good work, Neil. That's the end of it. Thank you. Moving on, agenda item number 21, American Rescue Plan, ARP, status and project. Gentlemen?
I think our bank account is just about completed.
Just about.
And projects are almost all completed and on schedule or ahead of schedule?
On schedule, yes. On schedule, we probably have, I mean, about seven projects to complete out of those 32.
So we're pleased to announce that things are going well in the ARP board.
Excellent. Thank you all. Anything further, Commissioner?
Good.
Okay, great. We have no executive session items on the agenda today. Moving on, agenda item number 22, adjournment. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, everybody, for coming in and sharing this hour and a half with us. Great meeting.
Send it to me, it's going to work. Send it to me.
Great.
But I wanted to keep something specific for this, so yes, if anyone wants to. Yes, and we'll do. Yes, and we'll do. Yes. I really didn't think it was going to be a long call day, because we should have cut out ahead of time. I thought my, I think I lost it. I really, it's something that needs to be.
It's like, oh, I'm getting your cell phone screen.
I just saw it, I, because I left it in my pocket for my cell phone.
The only one that works inside us.
Right.
If, if.